I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:30 PM on this ninth day of September 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's executive orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it is impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on VB schools.com, broadcast on VBTV 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, would you do an attendance roll call, please?
Present in School Board chambers is Jessica Owens, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Rye, Ms. Weems, Ms. Manning, and Ms. Hughes. Currently, Ms. Holt is not present.
Thank you. Okay, some quick admin matters. I have one announcement, and then I'll open it up for anybody else with that the Governance Committee with the retreat role discussed a January single-day retreat, which we don't do every year, but we often have. And the one date that was presented by staff was January 25, which is a Tuesday. It's keeping with our Tuesday meeting schedule. So I'll ask offline for members to get, I'm sorry, the 26th, I beg your pardon. I'll ask members to get back to me offline on that. We do have the backup of that previous Monday, the 25th. That would be a one-day retreat. So with that, does anybody else have anything to share, Mrs. Anderson?
One of the things that we talked about, you and I talked about, was on September 24th, there was a VSBA workshop that we have asked Regina to sign up for. And so we will be zooming on that, and I plan to be here in the building on September 24th to watch that. So if we have enough people, we can have a larger room, and we can distance.
And you want to remind everybody of the subject?
I don't have it in front of me.
I believe it's advocacy?
It is.
Legislative advocacy?
Legislative advocacy. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we have two other agenda items, and we've been asked to do these in reverse order. So transportation updates we will begin with, followed by an update on the reopening of schools. Both are obviously connected. So with that, Mr. Jack Freeman, welcome, our Chief of Operations.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Spence, we're here tonight to provide you an update on our transportation. I'm going to let Mr. David Pace go into the details, but we're happy to report that when we are ready to transition into face-to-face instruction in the yellow-yellow phase, we'll be ready to go. It has been a tremendous amount of work by our transportation team to be able to put this together, and I say that in fully acknowledging there's many different places that we have put that effort in. I'm going to bring up Mr. David Pace to talk through how we're positioned for that, and he's also going to talk about a couple other technology items. So with that, Mr. Pace?
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to provide you with information on the reopening transportation plan and to bring you up to date on some of the technology advances in the Office of Transportation Services. As you know, these are challenging times for the School Division. The times are no less challenging for the transportation team as we work on routing school buses to comply with health mitigation and for the safety of our students. In order to route buses with the appropriate number of students onboard and to maintain a safe environment for all students and staff, we focused on several areas: assignment of students to buses and seating, employee training, public communication, and health mitigation measures. First, by working with the Department of School Leadership, Teaching and Learning, and the Department of Technology, we requested parents to complete a transportation registration request through ParentView to be downloaded into Synergy by midnight on August 12. Identifying all students who need school bus transportation and where they reside was crucial to the staff being able to create bus routes and assign students to maintain the appropriate social distancing. Based on the current student data, Transportation Services has a sufficient number of school buses and school bus drivers to service all students during the yellow-yellow phase. Our projected analysis shows we can absorb all current vacancies and sufficiently cover for regular absences due to the limited number of students we will be transporting in the yellow-yellow phase. As an example, during the 219-220 school year, we transported approximately 20,000 elementary school students. Current data shows 10,642 elementary students have requested transportation. We expect that number to grow to about 12,000 with new kindergarten and pre-kindergarten registrations, parents who did not respond to the registration, and other anomalies. This is still well below the 20,000 students last year. This reduced number means we have enough school bus drivers to assign to all bus runs in the yellow-phase while keeping ridership as low as possible and have available bus drivers to cover some absences. The challenge we will face is to more, as more students return to in-person instruction in later phases, our resources may be stressed if the ridership numbers remain restricted. Our district is not unique in the nation when it comes to a shortage of qualified school bus drivers. Compounding that problem are the COVID-19 restrictions at DMV and limited access to job fairs and other common recruiting tools. Our team has been developing creative strategies to overcome these challenges. We have applied for and been approved to temporarily perform on-slate Division of Motor Vehicle CDL exams. We are working on recruiting strategies with Human Resources and the Department of Communications and Community Engagement. The bottom line is, we are fully prepared for the yellow-phase of reopening, and we continue to plan ahead for a complete reopening in the months ahead. In consultation with a panel of physicians, it was agreed our preferred ridership goals would use one student per seat for all students. However, the panel agreed that up to two-way seat would be acceptable, especially for elementary-age children, if it was required to return students to a face-to-face instruction environment. Therefore, the up-to-two-way seat for students will only be used if absolutely necessary to provide school bus service on schedule to these children. The panel supported this with the understanding that face masks for all students will be required, younger students being less affected by the virus, smaller students being below the high-back seat in front of them that performs a natural barrier, and siblings or close friends at the bus stop sitting together. Additionally, to provide school bus services to the identified programs without significant alterations of school operating hours, a higher ridership at the elementary level was needed. However, to provide time between runs, school operating hours were adjusted with high school's seat time set at 6 hours and 40 minutes instead of the current 6 hours and 50 minutes. And 10 minutes were added between school levels to provide drivers time to complete required duties and to take into consideration the possible time delays around school sites due to more parents transporting their children. This 10 to 50-minute extension moves the last tier, the middle schools, to a 10 AM to 4:30 PM time schedule. Elementary and middle schools will maintain their 6-hour-and-30-minute seat time for students. To make it easy for students to stay in assigned seats, we'll be marking the seats with numbers similar to that used in the airline industry: 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, and so forth. These assigned seats will be used both morning and afternoon. Students will load the bus from the back to the front at the morning pickup points, with the exception of kindergarten and pre-K students, who will be assigned seats up front by the school bus driver as we have historically done. Unloading and loading the school bus at the school site will be determined by the school site administrators with assistance from the Office of Transportation Services. If a parent wishes to change their transportation plans from no school bus to a school bus, the Office of Transportation Services will review the request and provide a bus on a space-available basis, once again, trying to maintain the social distancing requirements. To make sure our drivers understand their responsibilities in keeping the children on their bus safe and to ensure consistency among drivers, we will be developing a training video that details the cleaning requirements, seating requirements, personal protective equipment requirements, and how to handle unique situations when children come to a stop without a mask or refuse to wear a mask on the school bus. This video will be incorporated in our service train, where supervisors will focus on all aspects of our unique transportation environment. To be clear, no student will be denied entry to the school bus. Drivers will provide students with a mask if they do not have one. Transport them to the school and inform the school administration so they can contact the parents. This picture also includes items that will be provided to school bus drivers as needed to protect their safety and the safety of the children. Parents will be strongly advised to have their children wash their hands and use hand sanitizer prior to boarding the school bus. Hand sanitizer must be 60% or more alcohol to be effective against the virus. At these percentages, in case you're asked, the sanitizer is highly flammable and is not allowed on school buses. At this point, I'd like to show a first version of the training video. If I knew how to start it.
My name is David Pace, and I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services. Today, to give you the, to ensure the safety of students and our employees as we return to the reopening of schools and school bus transportation starts. First thing we'll do is we'll load the bus from the rear to the front, and the seats will be assigned to the students. We use the airline industry way of numbering the seats for easy remembrance for the children. The seat that they are assigned the first day will be the seat that they are assigned for the year. We will have two different seating arrangements. The middle and the high schools will sit one to a seat in alternating spots, window aisle, window aisle, from the front to the back. We'll use a two-to-a-seat for the elementary school students. Consultation with our medical authority, they said that would be good as long as everyone wore a mask and siblings can sit together, neighborhood friends that they are in close association with on their basis can sit together. So we think that health mitigation will work best for the elementary-age students. There's another part of our health mitigation strategy, every school bus will be provided a disinfectant spray and wipe in order to wipe down the high-touch areas on the school bus after every run, and then another more thorough cleaning at the end of the route, boarding route and the afternoon route. Another part of our health mitigation strategy is the wearing of a mask by all students and staff. If a student comes to the bus stop without a mask, the bus driver will supply them one. If the parent is with the student, the parent will be asked to provide a mask in the future. If the parent is not with the student, the bus driver will report the student to the school administration, and they will be contacting the parent. In any event, no child will be left in the school bus stop. They will board the bus and be taken to the school.
We also have a plan to notify parents and school administrators of assigned school bus stops for the students. We anticipate uploading the student stop data into the student information system so parents can access their child's stop information through ParentView. All parents will receive an alert now message, notify them of a new transportation resource. When available, parents, when that is available, parents will see notification of the assigned school bus stops for their children and the time to be at the bus stop as well as the scheduled drop-off time. Additionally, supervisors will work directly with school administrators to provide route and stop information and bus assignments. We are currently working with communications and community engagement regarding the rollout of ParentPortal FULL. Current plans are to pilot the Landstown Elementary, Middle, and High School areas until we're satisfied as working as planned, and then roll out to other schools soon thereafter. ParentPortal LIGHT will still give all parents the ability to trace any bus in our fleet while we test and make ParentPortal FULL live and available. Any parent that signs up for Edulog ParentPortal FULL will have the information at their fingertips. Another important project in the Office of Transportation Services is our technology initiative, including the, again, the Edulog ParentPortal FULL, mobile data terminals or the data tablets that are being installed on all our school buses. Obviously, parents want to know when the bus will reach their child's stop, when that bus arrives at the school, and that their child safely returns home from school or any extracurricular activity. To that end, Transportation will be adding a new application, Edulog ParentPortal FULL, that helps provide operational transparency and genuine peace of mind about the safety and security of their child. One of the biggest challenges we face is driver absenteeism and getting information to the substitute drivers that need to transport students to school or home. The data tablets allow drivers access to all routing information in real time so that they can make data-driven decisions to transport students. The tablets also provide another method of open communications with the dispatch office. Last year, we rolled out Edulog's ParentPortal LIGHT application. This year, we'll be offering parents a second option to track their child's school bus. This improved app integrates with our routing software and gives parents real-time information regarding the bus's estimated time arrival to the child's stop, as well as any bus substitutions that may occur. The app will also notify parents when a change to the route, stop, or time schedule occurs. Additional programs will be available to parents and administrators by the week of September 14, 2020. For future implementation, the app also has capabilities for the transportation team to account for all students who board and exit a school bus. The major differences between the ParentPortal LIGHT program and the ParentPortal FULL Tablets give drivers accuracy and completeness of transportation data and eliminates the need for a paper route sheet, as well as providing the driver with an assigned student-passenger list. Edulog's navigation is designed specifically for school buses with student safety in mind. It's helping to safely navigate planned bus runs and routes. An additional benefit is immediate and improved communication with the dispatch office. As introduced in the winter of 2019, another technology that is employed by the transportation team to address safety issues is the School Bus Stop Arm Camera Program. The School Bus Stop Arm Camera was initiated in February 2019 when 100 cameras were installed on the outside of the school bus to capture the violators of the school bus stop law. The program has the sole purpose of improving safety for children loading and unloading school buses by educating motorists on the law to reduce or eliminate passing violations. Some of the biggest injuries to students riding the bus to and from school occur not when the bus is moving, but when students are loading and offloading. Each year, the National Association of State Directors of Pupil Transportation conducts a one-day count of illegal school bus passing incidents throughout the United States. are any upfront capital costs. also provides the Virginia Beach City Public Schools with a partnership with the Virginia Beach Police Department since the Code of Virginia requires the citations to be verified. March 1, 2019 to March 15, 2020, 4,547 citations were issued. The fine for passing a stopped school bus loading/unloading children is $250. The Stop Arm Program is extremely important in providing a safe loading and unloading for children. The transportation team is monitoring the data and the statistics to closely determine the effectiveness of the program for possible expansion even further. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, starting with Mrs. Anderson.
So what happens if a student starts to get on the bus, doesn't have a mask, and refuses to wear a mask? What are the plans, and what will the bus driver do? What if the parent says, "Nope, my child can't wear a mask," for whatever health reason they cite? What are we supposed, what are the bus drivers supposed to do?
Well, our thinking on this is, if the parent is with the child and says the child's not going to wear a mask, then I think the bus driver could say, "Well, then the child will need to be escorted back home." And in a mitigation of risk, if there's a first grader at a bus stop, and we say, "We're going to leave you here at this bus stop," in our opinion, the risk of that first grader when there's no parent with him and we leave him at a bus stop is much higher than us trying to separate him on the bus away from the other children, get him to school, get him a mask, and get the parents contacted. That was our, that was our thing.
And contact administration right away? Soon as you arrive? Contact administration?
Yes, well, yes, the person who's out, you know, checking the buses in, they'll be giving those children. And it puts the bus driver in a real bad position to make the decision of leaving a child at a bus stop.
Right, right. And my last question has to do with safety of bus drivers. So I'm wondering about, are bus drivers, I know they're being provided masks, are they being provided any other protection, i.e., Plexiglas of any type or one of those face shields?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We do have face shields available for drivers upon request. Those are typically well-used by our special needs drivers and assistants who have students with special conditions where that, but any bus driver can request a shield. We are, there is no Plexiglas barrier approved by the Federal Motor Vehicle Safety Standards to go on a school bus in Virginia. They don't pass the crash standards, so, and we check with the vendors and the state on that. But if they want a face shield instead of a mask, we can certainly provide them one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Melnick.
What was the response rate from parents with students that need to ride the bus? Their reservations, if you will?
Let me pull those numbers up. We had elementary parents, 10,642; sixth graders, 2,298; high school, ninth graders, 2,636.
All right, so that's pretty good. You said last year you transported 20,000 elementary students?
Twenty thousand, plus.
All right, so that'll allow for some mitigation on those buses if it's equally, that's the problem, I think, right?
Let me, let me say, let me clarify this. It's our intent, if we can keep one to a seat, we're going to keep it one to a seat. We're only going to use two to a seat if it becomes absolutely necessary to get the children who said they need bus transportation to their instructional sites. And even then, if we do that, we're going to either make sure their siblings together or close neighborhood friends that they play with all weekend in the cul-de-sac and get on the bus, et cetera, et cetera. But we're hoping that we will, there won't be many of our elementary buses that will have two to a seat.
Okay. But that will also mean it'll be a little more crowded, like you said, in the parking lot with parent drop-off.
That is really an unknown at this point. I suspect it will be, and it's going to take some time, week or so, probably. And that's not unusual. Every start of the school year, we have to work out those logistics of parents' drop-off and bringing in the, what's complicating it more this year is there's going to be probably a lot more
So that first week will also let us know if we'll need police presence for traffic?
Okay. So in addition to those, because when you say parent drop-off, we're adding in a piece that's in addition to transportation. So we've, we are aware of the potential change in the way that it'll look this year. We're addressing that, we're getting more people that are onsite. We're in communication with Virginia Beach Police Department. That's not to say we're going to have a police officer onsite at every one of the schools when it starts, but we're putting all those pieces together, and we're developing plans. And just, just like we always do at the start of a new year, we'll observe based on the best plan we put together, and then we'll make adjustments to improve it throughout the course of the first week of instruction. So we're aware of the concern, and we have put things in place to mitigate it, and then we're going to make responsive change when and where required.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Weems.
Yes, and I just want to say, you know, a lot of parents maybe didn't sign up for bus transportation, not out of reservations, but actually out of helping, because I know the form came out, and I, along with a lot of people in our neighborhood, signed up that we would drive our grandchildren or children to school to help out. So I just want to thank the community, because I think the numbers show that a lot of folks have been willing to do that. And just thank you for all of those who did and who are willing to, you know, put forth the inconvenience to help out those who do not have a ride to school. Also, I just want to thank you for all the Stop Arm stuff. I know that I came to Dr. Spence years ago because one of our bus drivers in Aragona, and I cannot think of her name, so I've got to look it up and give her kudos, but she sent us videos right there in front of Bayside High School, Aragona area, about how many folks were running the bus, you know, stops. And so she was persistent, and we were persistent. At first, it wasn't going to work, and then it did, and now we can see, hopefully, that it's trained, hopefully, it will train more people not to do that, but just kudos for all the work and for expanding this program. I really appreciate that. And thank you, bus drivers, and thank you, our Aragona bus driver who made this all happen, who started it. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Holt.
Thank you. I have no questions there. I do have a point of order, Madam Chairwoman Rye. We have an agreement that everybody in this building and in this chamber should be wearing a face mask unless they have some type of dispensation, and I would like to know why we are not enforcing it.
I'll just take the opportunity to say I felt there were a few more issues I needed to discuss with our School Board Attorney, who was not available before this workshop.
So maybe we should take a vote on it, whether we should enforce it or not?
I would ask for some indulgence to wait for the time between the workshop and the But you have a motion to raise, so be clear on what you're asking is a motion.
We're in a workshop. You can't do that.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
We, we should just lead this to the, to the chair and to our attorney and knock anybody else.
Okay, your point of order is so noted.
I can't hear you, excuse me.
Your, your point of order is so noted, but we'll continue with the workshop right now. Thank you. Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Okay, good. Um, I just had a, a question in regards to the cleaning of the buses. Have you been, I guess, in contact with the bus drivers? And I guess kind of gotten their feedback on their ability to clean the, I don't know how many seats there are in their forty-some-odd seats between routes and the timeliness of that? And have there been any concerns about just general physical ability to make that happen multiple times per day if it wasn't something that was originally in their kind of job description?
Well, the, you're, you're right. There was a number of, uh, multiple times of after every run, wiping down the high-touch areas. They've always been required to clean their bus. But, uh, we did this all summer with the summer school bus routing. I did not get any negative pushback from drivers, or it wasn't possible. We, that's why we have extended the time between the, the levels to give them 10 or 15 minutes in order to do that. So in full answer to your question, I won't know until we get into the operation and get the feedback from the, the vast majority of drivers, and if we do, then we'll, we'll make adjustments for that. But right now, we think, we've gone out and did it ourselves. As you saw in the, in the video, that's one of my supervisors. I had him go out and time what it took to wipe down the high-touch areas, and he said a 10 to 15-minute spread between runs would be sufficient to do that. So we, we feel comfortable it can be done. And, but, but that's just between runs. When the morning runs are over, they're going to go through and wipe that bus down thoroughly. I mean, everything, not only the high-touch areas, but everything. So, and that, and they have plenty of time to do that from 9:15, 9:20, when they drop off their middle school, until 1:30, when they get to the high school. And then in the afternoon, they'll, after their middle school run, they'll do the same thing. They'll do a more thorough cleaning.
Okay. And then my other question might just be an obvious thing. I know that you mentioned that, uh, hand sanitizer can't be on the buses because of the high flammability. The cleaning products that we're using, I'm assuming that those are not flammable, then, is that correct?
Well, they're, they're approved to be on a school bus. What we have to do is go to the State Department of Education, say, "What can we have on this school bus?" And they, they give us guidance on that. And all the cleaner, cleaners, we use a Birch LOD cleaner, which they said, "Yes, that's fine. That's approved by all the right people." We do provide our bus drivers with a small purse-sized bottle, bottle of hand sanitizer. What I'm talking about, some people think we need to put a, you know, big gallon jar on there to do that, and we can't do that. That's not, not permitted. But every bus driver has a pocket thing of hand sanitizer, which don't help the kids, but that's why we're going to encourage the parents to make sure their children do the pre-wash. And when they get to school, the schools can do that. So when they get to the schools, they can, they can use those hand sanitizers in the school.
Okay, um, that's helpful. I'm assuming they're going to need a, I don't know how much spray you need to have on the bus to do it multiple times per day throughout the day? So I was wondering if we're not going to have a gallon of, uh, hand sanitizer because of the flammability? If it's safe to have a gallon of the cleaning product, so?
We, we give them a quart bottle, and we have, uh, we're, we're having our service trucks in the morning, and so if they use it, they can go get a refill. So they, they may need to refill that quart bottle, but no, it's not a gallon bottle. It's just a quart spray bottle, like, like you would use in your household.
Okay, I think we're ready to wrap it up. I'll just end with a, a quick follow-up to Mrs. Melnick. Because, uh, so it's about 50% with elementary, and with the understanding you expect that to probably rise a bit. What does the percentage work out for middle and high school? I mean, we have these figures here, but I don't have the comparison.
Uh, I think we transport between 4,500 and 5,000 middle school students, and probably 3,500 to 4,000 high school students. We transport about 45,000, 46,000 kids in a normal school year. So this is about 20, so it's about 50%.
Oh, and I'm forgetting too, this is only a single grade for each school, so it's hard to come up with a percentage, okay?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, is that it for everybody from, with Mr. Pace? We thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we are ready for our third agenda item, the second concerning reopening of schools. Specifically, updates, well, updates on the reopening of schools. Welcome, Doc, and we all, and I'm sure we'll hear more about it in the formal meeting tonight about the official first day yesterday. So we, we, welcome Dr. Bergen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ry. Good afternoon to you and to Mrs. Melnick, board members, Dr. Spence. For our parents and students and other community members who might be watching from remote, my name is Mark Bergen, I'm the Chief of Staff. It's my pleasure to be here with you this afternoon, along with other members of our senior staff, to provide some updates for the community at the start of this new school year. I'm going to begin this presentation, as I have the last several board meetings, by reviewing the current health metrics. I'll then turn the podium over to Mr. Freeman, who is going to provide some additional updates you just heard from transportation. You're also going to get updates on facilities, custodial, and food services. He'll be followed by Dr. Rogers, our Chief Academic Officer, who's going to provide an update on our use of assessments at the start of this school year for identifying and addressing learning gaps, as children have been away from us for some time now. Dr. Rogers will be followed by Dr. Alexander, our Director of Community Engagement, who'll provide an update on the many community engagement efforts we've made over the past several months to connect and engage with our community. And then the final presenter this afternoon will be Dr. Robertson, our Chief Schools Officer, who will conclude the presentation by sharing with you some of the numbers about the Safe Learning Centers that started yesterday. And he will provide another update for you on our efforts around scheduling students and assigning staff. So let's get started. This screenshot is, I'm sure, starting to look very familiar to you. It is a screenshot from the Virginia Department of Health from the VDH website taken this past Monday. This particular screenshot indicates the percent of positivity in the eastern region since mid-March. So I'll acclimate you, as I have before, to the lines on the, on the screenshot. You'll see the green line marks the threshold for our percent positivity, and the green zone is anything below 5%. The red line marks our red zone for percent positivity of anything greater than 10%. And between the green and the red lines, of course, would be the yellow zone, anything greater than 5% and less than 10%. So as you read along with the chart, you'll see the date references. And since the middle of July, the seven-day rolling average for percent positivity has steadily declined from a high of 12.2% on July 18th to its current level of 7.8%, which is down from 8.4% since the last board meeting. So in the last two weeks, it's declined from 8.4% to 7.8%. And this is a companion screenshot from the VDH website. This shows the number of new cases in the eastern region on a seven-day rolling average. The green line towards the very bottom of the chart is indicated by 26 or fewer new cases per day as our threshold for the green zone. And the red line, uh, just slightly higher up the chart, is our threshold of 265 or more cases per day in the eastern region to define our red zone. In between, anything greater than 26 or less than 265 is our yellow zone. You can see, again with the date references, since reaching a record high of 483.3 cases per day on July 25th, the number of new cases in the eastern region has continued to decline steadily. Uh, we are now solidly in the yellow zone at 168 cases per day. That 168 is down from 218 since the last board meeting two weeks ago. So with that review of the health metrics, I'll now turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman, who is going to be providing some additional updates for you on our division services. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. Uh, tonight, I will update you on facilities, custodial, and food services. And as part of our VB Safe Together series, we developed videos to reinforce the mitigations that we've developed. I'm going to share them again tonight, and let's start with facilities.
... six feet of social distancing when you enter all of our buildings. Which school building? And you'll notice that there's a COVID-19 self- screening questionnaire. We need-
So very sorry. What she's trying to do right now is get it to, to play from the beginning.
Stu-
Not happening?
... and member of the public to make sure that they follow this questionnaire before entering our public school buildings. As you enter our public school buildings, you'll notice- As you approach the security desk, you'll also notice that there's a Plexiglas barrier between the security assistant and the public. For those members of the public that are directed to the main office, you'll also notice in the main office at the desk, another Plexiglas barrier to, to define a barrier between the main office staff and those members of the public who are visiting. All of our water fountains are working in our schools. Here's a good example where, before you touch the water station, clean your hands. Go ahead and fill up your own personal water bottle. We encourage you to bring that. Clean up after you're done, and have a nice drink of water. Now, you're in a traditional middle school classroom here at Salem Middle School. You'll notice that the student desks are spaced three feet apart for social distancing. You'll also notice that we've got tape located on the floors also to further define social distancing. Let me take you up here to a teacher's desk, so you can see that we've got a Plexiglas barrier in the event students need to approach the teacher, also to better define social distancing in the classroom. We want to ensure that all of our students, staff, faculty, and community members feel safe and welcome for the first day of school.
So my apologies for the first part of the video. What you missed is the approaching the building. We have signs encouraging the wearing of masks. And then at the front door where the buzzer, the buzz-in system is, we have our, our screening tool that's posted there. And I told you at the last school board meeting that we were exploring the use of Plexiglas barriers in our classroom to provide additional measure of security, I'm sorry, of safety. In addition to the barriers that Mr. Arnold showed the video, we produced barriers to support classrooms with flexible seating and small group instruction. Pictured here, you can see some of the examples. So you can see the single-piece barriers, when we have, uh, chairs that are on opposite sides of the table. It's kind of challenging to see because it's Plexiglas, but that long table has an H-shaped barrier that provides a, a barrier for when all students are leaning in to be able to further support distancing. All right, so for custodial, let's start by taking a look at the custodial video.
Hello, I'm Larry, instructor. This purpose is purposes to provide a safe, healthy, and clean environment for our students and staff to work in. Some of the cleaning items that we have provided for the teachers are a roll of paper towel, a ball of disinfectant, which they can use during the day when instruction is going on in case a student touched something that needed to be sanitized. This is the only approved chemical that we are allowing in Virginia schools. So teachers, parents, friends, do not bring any other chemicals into the building, because we want to make sure to maintain a safe, healthy environment for our students, especially when they're wearing masks. Our plan is to sanitize restrooms and water fountains using the Foment sprayer at least every three hours. We also have a Victory Sprayer, which is a backpack that does the same thing as the, as the Foment machine. It's interchangeable. It helps when we're using it on stairwells, things like that. High-touch point areas will be sanitized every two hours, restrooms, water fountains, every three hours. Thank you.
And for the Foment machines that you see there, we're expecting to receive the final order on September 18th. At the last school board meeting, I reported that we had expected to receive them on the 8th of September. So we'll, we expect to receive them on Friday, the 18th. Once that shipment is received, every one of our schools will have a Foment machine and the ability to rapidly disinfect our schools. When used as directed, the disinfectant shown in the video is safe and effective. That disinfectant has been positioned in classrooms to enable quick disinfecting when adults in the classroom determine that it's needed. Moving forward, cleaning wipe supplies are improving, and we intend to acquire cleaning wipes to replace the disinfectant. So we're, gee, I'm just trying to get to the food services slide, and I don't know if we're stepping on each other. One more. There you go. Thank you. All right, for food service, I'm going to play the video that we shared as part of the VB Safe Together series. But as you can see on this slide, the USDA has since updated their guidance. I'll give you more on that after the video.
So, we were tasked with providing principals flexibility, whether it's a big school, small school, large population, small population, old school, new school, to have a structure that will allow students to eat in classrooms, practice social distancing guidelines, proper sanitation, and basically protect themselves and others during this pandemic crisis. What you see behind me is a setup that can be moved around anywhere in school, serve a full menu, and allow the principal the flexibility to set up a lunch schedule that that suits their needs. So what you see here is an example of a flex station that could be moved to various locations in the school. From a safety standpoint, you're going to see a barrier protect the cashier. You're going to see a scanner, which is replacing our student keypad, so they don't have to plug anything in. They will just use their ID card with a scanner on the back, zap that, and they have purchased their meal, and they are good to head back to their classroom. You also have the hand sanitizer. You have a wireless laptop, so this thing could be moved around. You also have walkie-talkies back here, so that if they start running low on any food supply, they can call back to the cafeteria and give replenish. Over here, you'll see that we've got a, a full menu selection. That would be what's on our menu typically. The student will still have the latitude to choose what they want from the regular menu, but they're just not going to be reaching over and, and grabbing multiple items. They'll take their item, scan, get their beverage, and head back to the car. One additional thing that we'll be doing to protect our staff and students is we're going to be going to a cash register. Every student has a free school cafe account that they can access and set up through VBschools.com. That allows you to look up menus, allows you to put money on account, allows you to apply for free meals, and also allow you to access online ordering that we hope will be available very soon. So in closing, what I want to emphasize is that Food Services has come up with a flexible plan that, working with schools and administrators, allows them to maximize their schedule. It protects students, protects staff. They have latitude to be in classrooms, they can be in the small groups and other locations in schools they need. These stations can be moved anywhere in the, in the building, since they're on, using the laptop. We think this plan is going to be flexible, it's going to protect it, and we're excited that we can continue to give our students a safe environment.
So two reasons I wanted to share this video with you. Number one, to show you that we're, we're ready to serve meals safely when we return to face-to-face instruction. And this is the video that we had shared with the community just about two weeks ago. However, the Monday after we shared the video with the community, the USDA announced that they were expanding permission to conduct the summer feeding plan model through the end of this calendar year. We then received state guidance on the 3rd of September, and that was less than a week ago. We then received state guidance on the 3rd of September, and that was less than a week ago. What this change means for us is that at all 86 of our schools, we will serve meals based upon the summer feeding model, and there will be no charge to any of our students. It's welcome news, but it is a change to what we had originally communicated to the community, and we're sharing that. And we're having positive results in the first couple of days under that feeding model. As we discussed at the last school board meeting, our pickup window was initially communicated as 10:30 to 1:30. We've asked parents to communicate, request to expand that window directly to their schools, and we'll adjust as appropriate. And we're getting some of that feedback during the course of the week. With that, I will now turn it over to Dr. Kip Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. As Dr. Bergen shared this afternoon, I will be providing you with an update on our assessment plans for addressing student learning gaps. More specifically, I'll talk a little bit about balanced assessment and our focus on less traditional and summative assessments and a more focused on frequent, low-stakes assessments that are authentic and formative in nature. So I want to talk a little bit now about balanced assessment. Virginia Beach City Public Schools drives teaching and learning using a balanced assessment approach. And although balanced assessment has frequently been a focus on our professional learning in the past and is embedded in all that we do, we've included more professional learning on the topic in our Summer Essential Professional Learning that was provided to all of our teachers in order to ensure that we have a common understanding that exists and to highlight ways in which we assess our learners in a virtual setting as well as in an in-person setting. Balanced assessment is a model that enables student learning performance to be thoroughly examined and measured fairly using a variety of data points that are both formal and informal, summatively and formatively in order to inform instruction and to report student performance. On the screen, you'll see how the Virginia Department of Education defines a balanced assessment system. And I want to lift out just three key aspects of balanced assessment that we are focusing on this year. Well, period. A variety of assessment types, measuring student achievement as well as growth, and then focusing on the five Cs which will help us get at deeper learning in the virtual setting and/or in an in-person setting. And we're certainly committed to ensuring that fair and equitable assessment practices are implemented regardless to which the setting we are in. Now what you see on the screen in front of you, you see some of our elementary levels' more formal assessment measures. So for example, in Language Arts, students in grades pre-K through 3 will be screened three times over the course of the school year via phonological awareness literacy screening, or what we refer to as PALS. This tool identifies students who are at risk and provides us with data to support small group instruction that's based on the needs of each individual learner. Then we also have the reading inventory. And the reading inventory will continue to be utilized in our school division to determine who is on reading, who is reading on grade level in grades 2 through 5. Now typically, we do it through 3 through 5, but this year we've added 2 to make sure that we can capture those students in grade 2. Math fall formatives have also been added this year in order to identify any potential learning loss from the extended school closure of 2019-20. We will talk more about these in a minute as they are only for this school year. They'll be administered during this month. In a response to a potential learning loss, the Virginia Department of Education worked with our math specialists and other specialists across the state, as well as teachers, in order to develop what's called just-in-time quick sheets, excuse me, quick checks. There's one quick check for every math SOL, and we'll also spend a little bit more time digging into that in just a moment. And based on feedback from our stakeholders, the number of benchmark assessments that we offer was reduced from 3 to 2 in order to provide our students and teachers with more instructional time, but still assess the amount of, the same amount of standards. The benchmarks will still provide thorough data to inform remediation as well as recovery plans and identify those students who need more accelerated learning opportunities. The data that we collect from those benchmark assessments are aligned to our curriculum and standards and help teachers gauge what standards and concepts need to be revisited and which have been mastered. So beyond the more formal measures on the screen, our teachers will continue to utilize balanced assessment practices daily with students by utilizing checklists, exit slips, rubrics, and performance-based assessments, and more. I want to talk a little bit about reading inventory. Talked a little bit about it before. The reading inventory is a diagnostic assessment that's given to all of our students in grades 2 through 9. And this assessment provides quantifiable data for forecasting student trajectory for the year. Our teachers and administrators can easily and effectively use the data to differentiate instruction, guide small group instruction, and determine any gaps or needs for remediation or even acceleration. The reading inventory can be administered through either synchronous and/or asynchronous virtual instruction. It also has a guide, wonderful guide for our parents and caregivers to be able to assist them with understanding what the assessment is. It even gives college and career readiness reports, Growth Gold reports, and instructional planning reports that we can use for instruction. Now I'll talk a little bit about PALS. As I previously mentioned, classroom teachers will be administering the PALS assessment. And that data provided by this assessment tool is tightly aligned with the science of reading that we've been participating in professional learning all summer, and it will empower teachers to plan for targeted small group instruction that's aligned to the specific student need. And additionally, the screening tool also determines who qualifies for additional intervention that's provided by our PALS staff. Now what's new this year in terms of formative assessments, we mentioned that on the previous slides, formative assessments are used to inform instruction, and it's also used to identify the needs of each learner and to develop learning plans that address any learning gaps that students may have, as well as any need for acceleration. Our curriculum provides a variety of formative assessment options. Now the VDOE recently created what I shared earlier, the just-in-time quick checks for students in grades kindergarten all the way through Algebra I. And those are designed to discover misconceptions or student errors when learning the content within a certain standard, particularly in math. The quick checks allow our teachers to reengage in prerequisite knowledge that's within the concept or grade level in order to focus on the immediate learning and not necessarily on what needs to be caught up. The quick checks consist of about three questions that help to identify gaps in essential learning and if any additional scaffolding needs to take place just in time. Our teachers are able to respond in the content or grade level, and any data collected from those assessments will be used to help teachers form small groups. And all those assessments, the quick checks, have been loaded in our Schoology groups for all grade levels. The new math fall formative assessments are very short formative assessments that align to the previous grade and were designed to capture any learning loss from last year. For example, a 4th grade student will take four separate mini-assessments on grade 3 material that covers each of the mathematics reporting categories. And those are designed to be given as small group independent station activities. And that data will be used to form small groups in the first six weeks of school if necessary. And I'll keep in mind that we were teaching during the emergency learning plan, so many of those students had already mastered those skills. I'll talk a little bit about secondary assessment. So teachers have been provided within their Schoology groups several resources to address student learning gaps and to mitigate lost instruction. Each of those resources were explained to teachers on September 1st when they had their professional learning that was provided by the Department of Teaching and Learning. And the first, just as we discussed earlier, are the Virginia Department of Education Just-In-Time Quick Checks. What I did mention earlier was that included in the Just-In-Time Quick Checks is a list of Virginia Department of Education-supporting resources that can be used for planning instruction to address any unfinished learning. And in addition to those resources, the math department has completed other resources that will also be able to use, be used to address any unfinished learning. And those resources do consist of video recordings that address content standards, additional practice items, as well as formative assessments. And each group in Schoology has a folder entitled Opportunities for Student Learning where those resources are housed. We also have daily spiral reviews that are available for teachers to use that consist of two problems that relate to the current standards. And the purpose of those spiral reviews is to allow students to keep revisiting content throughout the term and to address any unfinished learning as noted in formative and summative assessments. Student data trackers have also been created for each unit where students are able to track their progress by standard throughout the term. And lastly, our students are able to self-assess their knowledge of the standards, set goals for learning, and identify any next steps that they need to master the content. And they will track their scores for various assignments by standard. For English at the secondary level, loaded in Schoology are pre-assessments that focus on essential skills. They are aligned to Virginia Department of Education SOLs, and teachers can measure growth between the pre- and post-assessments. Our pacing guides have been revised as well to meet the 4x4 scheduling needs and the essential skills in each unit. They've been highlighted to narrow teachers' focus on the highly-tested skills in order to support students' academic growth. And instructional focus for English teachers this year includes teacher-led, small-group instruction where teachers can remediate, reteach, and enrich students based on the formative assessment data that they have access to. And then finally, to assist teachers in the 4x4 and digital environment, an SOL tracking guide has been provided, as well as asynchronous sample lessons. And similarly, for our science and history courses, both at the elementary and secondary level, we've done commensurate work in terms of providing opportunities for teachers to have resources to support the skills that are needed. And additionally, I want to point out in support of the 4x4 schedule and making sure that we have as little lost learning as possible, there have been some concerns about the recording of synchronous lessons that we put in place, and we are certainly revisiting that requirement immediately, and we will certainly share the outcome of that with our staff by the end of this week to make sure that we are, making sure that any student who is unable to access the learning during the virtual setting, that they be able to do so in the future in various, in various forms. So, speaking of 4x4, why are we going to the 4x4 schedule this year? And I just want to remind the board that the purpose of going to the 4x4 schedule was to create a middle and high school schedule for this school year that minimizes all health and safety, maximizes all health and safety protocols in order to decrease the teacher-to-student ratio in an in-person setting. It also allows us the opportunity to reduce the academic load for our students as well as to minimize any transitions and maximize the use of cohorting in an in-person school setting. And lastly, but certainly not least, is to focus on student and staff wellbeing as we navigate these uncharted waters. So what considerations do we need to take as we approach this new learning in addition to the assessment? Well, SOL assessments, our students in the secondary are certainly eligible for SOL tests to be taken with the corresponding SOL course at the end of each term, so they will have access to do that. And with our Advanced Placement and International Bachelor degree courses in Terms 1 and 2, the Department of Teaching and Learning will continue to work in collaboration with DOSL to ensure that our teachers and students are able to access multiple resources as they prepare for those exams, AP-NIB. There are teaching and learning collaboration groups along with facilitated virtual citywide PLCs or professional learning communities to ensure that our teachers are able to share and collaborate easily between buildings. Our coordinators are meeting with AP teachers in specific content areas to discuss pacing, share best practices, instructional practices, and to help develop plans for supporting students all throughout the school year. Our teachers are also planning to utilize College Board resources such as AP Classroom and AP Daily. AP Classroom provides several resources to include practice assessments where teachers can monitor student progress. AP Daily provides video supports that students can use to address areas of weakness. And several of our AP teachers plan on using these resources as a means to utilize a flipped lesson or to remediate students that are in need of support. Schools are also ensuring that tutoring opportunities are provided to students to include practice AP exams, AP bootcamps, and academic support opportunities in Term 2. And our IB staff have done similarly. So now I'll turn this over to Dr. Alexander to share information from the Community Engagement Office.
Good evening, Madam Chair Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Edmund Alexander, Director of Family and Community Engagement, and I've been serving as the Acting Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. Since the pandemic hit, VBCPS has made a commitment to inform the community on the process of reopening schools. Through this commitment, there were several communication platforms utilized to educate the community. Several of these items are present on the current slide, including the creation of our hashtag VBSafeTogether, adding the health metric indicator on the website, and VBSafeFlyer. The goal was to ensure we were communicating information to the public as well as a message of feeling safe and being safe together. During the planning phases, VBCPS hosted seven communication forums, a five-part information session series known as VBSafeTogether, and two parent connection workshops. These information sessions and workshops were hosted by various VBCPS leadership, and each session was designed to take questions from the community. You'll see the, you'll see in this presentation, there were 2,000 questions submitted, and over 8,000 viewers tuned into the communication forum over the past few months via the Zoom format. We are very proud that we were able to serve the community and help, and help decrease the anxiety levels that students, staff, families, and the community were experiencing about the reopening of our schools. As we continue to move forward, we know there will be more questions. We are encouraging families to read the information we update daily on our VBCPS webpage, including the FAQ page, and to reach out to their own building administrators for clarity. Thank you, and I will now turn it over to Dr. Robertson.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to announce that the Safe Learning Centers began this week, operating in all 55 of our elementary schools with a total of 608 students being monitored by 244 employees. By way of reminder, the purpose of the Safe Learning Center program is to provide options for childcare during virtual learning time periods, primarily for the children of Virginia Beach City Public Schools teachers, but as well as for the essential employees of the city. Students are supervised by VBCPS employees who otherwise do not have a job assignment during this period of virtual instruction. Staff ensure that students are following health and safety measures while providing academic support and recreational activities for the students. SLCs are supervised by what we call monitors, and each monitor received training last week via Schoology. All monitors were given support on how to navigate Schoology in order to access the courses. Once all four courses were completed, an acknowledgement form was provided. And to date, we have 411 trained monitors, more trained than what we actually need. So we have plenty of backup to serve as substitutes. Today, I visited four elementary school sites and observed firsthand the success of the SLCs. Students were seated and engaged in learning, and three staff in each of the sites were circulating and helping individual students. But more importantly, all were smiling and seemed to enjoy the experience together. Information was provided to parents and guardians about the hours of operations, meal information, what supplies their child should bring, and health and safety expectations. Each parent signed an acknowledgement form that states Each parent signed an acknowledgement form that states they will assess their child's health each morning using a checklist that was provided at registration. As I noted on August 25th, all student and teacher assignments were completed and shared by Monday, August 31st. As a result of this enormous undertaking, all students and teachers had assignments and reported for learning in a virtual environment yesterday. As I also noted, the work was juxtaposed against the constant, consistent flow of new enrollees. Just last week, we processed over 1,000 new enrollments across 86 school sites. Even today, we are processing and scheduling new enrollees into classes. Currently, all students are participating virtually. When we pivot to in-person learning, class size and option one will be limited to the number of desks or tables we can place in a classroom with at least three feet of physical distancing. This single requirement dictates how many teachers are needed to provide in-person learning and those that will be needed to teach virtually. Finally, as of August 20th, the Office of Employee Relations had identified 419 of 841 staff that had submitted medical documentation to teach virtually. School administrators use this list to assign staff to teach virtually, and in most cases, this worked very well. However, there were a few cases where a school had a large percentage of families requesting option one, which then, combined with the reduced class size in option one, resulted in a greater need for that particular school to have staff teach in person. As of yesterday, we opened school with a handful of vacancies across K-12. And to address school vacancies and staffing for the Central VLC, the Department of School Leadership and Human Resources are currently screening teacher applications to assist schools and expedite the process, to allow school administrators to focus on students and teachers this week before conducting interviews next week, as needed. As I noted, two weeks ago, schools scheduled all students into the virtual environment, noting whether they chose option one or option two, and to match classes with teachers who preferred option one or option two, to the greatest extent possible. In doing so, schools, particularly at the secondary level, had to place some students who chose option two into a class developed for option one. And this was to accommodate the various scheduling scenarios that exist at the secondary level based on student course selections. When we transitioned in-person learning, we've developed a plan to address this issue. The first part of this plan is to see if teachers in this scenario would be willing to keep both in-person and virtual students when we return to in-person learning. Recognizing that this will result in some additional work for teachers, I talked to Dr. Spence, and he quickly agreed to support a stipend generated by CARES Act funds to pay option-one teachers, beginning with the pre-K through five, six, nine, and designated student groups, if they agreed to keep all their students when we transitioned to in-person learning. Also critical to this agreement was the support of Farrell Hunsacker, Chief Financial Officer, and John Mira, Chief Human Resources Officer. Option-one teachers who agree will be providing daily instruction within the scheduled class time to students who are in-person and remotely, using the technology tools we have provided to support synchronous instruction. Teachers were to share their decision today with their principal, and early returns indicate over 50% of secondary option-one teachers have agreed to take the stipend. And the elementary school results are still coming in, so it's too early for me to make a prediction. Of note, option-two teachers were not able to participate, as they will be teaching only virtual students for this first semester or term. With this information, the principal can then move into Part Two of the plan, and that is to determine how many students in a mixed-class setting would need to have a schedule change when we transition to in-person learning. These students would first be moved into a homeschool class in option-two, up to the class cap. The Standards of Quality Guidelines allow for larger class caps than we normally follow. Therefore, we will be making slight adjustments to class caps as needed to align with the SOQ guidelines. When the homeschool option-two classes are filled, we will move into Part Three of the plan, where students will be moved to the Central VLC to be scheduled with a teacher, very similar to what happens when a secondary student goes to summer school. Once we've completed all three parts of the plan, we can use this information to determine staffing and training for the Virtual Learning Center. Before I close, I know we all recognize the depth and scope of our work to place students and staff in the best possible learning environment. Our first major hurdle was to get all students scheduled into classes by September 8th, and we succeeded. Our next task is to make schedule modifications for as few students as possible to support a return to in-person learning for pre-K through five, grade six, grade nine, and designated students with disabilities and English-language learner students. And reflecting on this plan I just reviewed, I must say that despite our enthusiasm to welcome students back to school as early as September 22nd, if health metrics allow, this timeline presents a challenge that we cannot overcome. And talking with my team and others in the Department of Human Resources, we need an additional two weeks beyond September 22nd to be ready to welcome students back. This additional time will provide us a more realistic window to hire and train staff, to determine what schedule changes are needed, to contact parents, to talk with teachers, all while students and teachers are working each day, unlike when we had a similar challenge in August, when, of course, there were no students and teachers working in the building. I also recognize this request will be deemed unpopular with some. Yet it is my responsibility as the Chief Schools Officer to provide Dr. Spence with my team's best thinking on what can be done and in what timeframe. And as a division leader, I join you in accepting the responsibility to do what is in the best interest of over 5,000 school staff and 66,000 students. At this time, I guess we're all here to take questions.
Start with Mrs. Anderson.
So I think my first question has to do with the IB program. We've had so many emails from parents and even students in the IB program, and they are really worried and concerned that they're not going to be able to fulfill their requirements this year. So have you worked on that? Have you taken care of that? What is the status of that?
So, to answer your question, yes, we have been working on that for quite some time now. With the IB, first, I want to say thank you to all of the staff, both internally and externally, for the tremendous job that they've done with getting schools started. And part of that process is making sure that we have good conversations and planning with not only the teachers, but with students as well as families. And to echo what you're sharing, there are quite a bit of concerns from our students who are in the IB program, and rightfully so. The schedule, four-by-four, is a schedule that we've not done before. So it is quite the challenge to imagine with all the responsibilities that come associated with IB. So, for example, we all know that the independent assessment has to be done by spring break. They are really concerned about that, as they should be. But please know that we work very closely with Mrs. Cox at Princess Anne High School to have good conversations with parents. They had a wonderful meeting on Friday with parents, where parents felt a little more comfortable with the resources that were going to be provided with our students in the IB program, as did the students. Now, students are probably still a little more concerned, especially as they think about the second term. But we have some great things in place, and it will not be without challenges. If I stood here as a former gifted teacher, as a former IB NYPD principal, to say that there would not be challenges, that would not be truthful. There will be. And I can assure you that every adult that teaches IB students absolutely wants to be with those students, every student that is in the IB program, especially seniors who could walk away tomorrow because all they need is English and government. They are vested in that program, and we are absolutely going to make sure that they be successful in that program to the best we can. IB recognizes that we have some challenges as well, and they've been a little bit in terms of being able to reduce some of the assignments that are associated with science, which will give back about four weeks of instruction. They reduced one of the assignments for English, which will help in giving back some time for instruction. They pulled back some of the requirements for the world languages, and Spanish, I think, and French, if I'm not mistaken. So they recognize that we are in a situation that we've not been in before. And I just want to say, if there are any IB kids listening to me talk, we are going to work with you and not let all of the work that you've gone through to be in vain because of COVID, and I don't want that to happen. So I also wanted the teachers to know that as well. Had a good conversation with Mrs. Cox, and we will stay in constant communication. I spoke with her directly myself to see whether there was anything that they could think of in terms of support, and as we go along, things will change. And I just ask that not only the teachers, parents, as well as the students, allow yourselves mercy and grace. We know that IB is a rigorous program, and we will certainly not let you falter.
So I just want to follow up with that real quick. Has there been any consideration into making an exception for this particular school and possibly not doing four-by-four for those IB students? I mean, I know that might sound impossible, but has there been any talk about it, any consideration about that whatsoever? Do we have to be rigid with the four-by-four for these IB students?
So they've made some married opportunities for courses to extend the span, the span of scope between Terms One and Two. And they've done some other creative things with scheduling. But in terms of having what's referred to as a hybrid four-by-four, as our neighboring school district Chesapeake does, where you have what's referred to as a skinny block where you can run some courses all along, we've chosen not to do that for a multitude of reasons that I spoke to earlier.
Okay.
Is that it, Mrs. Anderson?
That's it for me for now.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick, and then Mrs. Hughes.
So, Dr. Spence, Dr. Robertson, what are the implications of this two-week delay? And then my second question is about staffing.
So, the short version, as you heard Dr. Robertson explaining, is there are ongoing scheduling and staffing work that's happening in our schools. The team has shared with me, as you heard Dr. Robertson say, that they feel they need an additional two weeks to make that happen. And so the essential implication is that rather than say that we would be able to begin bringing students back on September 22nd, that we would need until October 6th to bring students back to school.
So, a staffing issue for a division our size is scary. So, and we've been talking about it for years, you know, that this is happening on the national level. So how are we okay as far as, I mean, you have a line of people that you're interviewing, and do you think we're gonna?
So we, right now, we are, we put together video interview questions last week and sent out to all of our teacher applicants, roughly 200, and we've received over 100 back so far. My team is previewing those to identify a group that we're going to interview on Monday with principal panels, to create a list of candidates that we can immediately pivot into as we identify additional vacancies beyond the ones we know we have right now.
What are we looking at?
So, we have roughly, as of today, we have roughly six to eight elementary school vacancies, three to five middle school, and 12 to 14 high school instructional vacancies. And if we filled every one of those, we would still need some additional staff for the Central VLC. So Farrell has granted, out of, again, with Dr. Spence and Farrell working together, has provided seven additional FTEs to staff elementary schools. Because at the elementary school level, with the limitations in class size and option one, and trying not to overload the virtual environment, we're going to shift our additional seven FTEs to serve elementary schools. So there's some options that elementary doesn't have that secondary has. You can pick up an extra block supplement at secondary, you can't do that at elementary. So we've had some teachers do that as well.
I know this has been a huge task. I just can't even imagine, but, so.
Yeah, it'll get done. We just, to do it right, we need a couple more weeks.
Can we repeat those vacancies one more time, please?
Elementary, as of today, was six to eight. Middle school was three to four, and high school was 12 to 14.
I'm sorry. I had to laugh because I thought you said 68.
No, no, no. That was a mask echo.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Weems.
Actually, my question was the same as Ms. Anderson's. It was about the four-by-four with respect to the IB program.
Okay, thank you. Let us know if you want to get back in the queue later. Mrs. Weems, and then Mrs. Holtz.
Yes, I was going to ask the same thing about kind of what changed in the last two weeks, because two weeks ago, we were here, and several of us asked, Dr. Spence, are we going to be ready? Are we going to be ready? Because some of us thought, you know, maybe we should wait till nine weeks, and are we going to be ready? Yes, yes, yes. So in two weeks when we come back, are we going to be ready for October 5th?
So I think, if you recall during the last meeting, I was asked that question. You're exactly right. And I said then, I can't give you that answer. Within a week to two weeks, I will have a more definitive answer for you about whether or not we can open on September the 22nd, because of the ongoing concerns with trying to figure out these two master schedules, and really, at this point, three master schedules. And I feel very confident, based on my conversation with the team over the course of the last week and leading up to this meeting, that if we have the two extra weeks, then on October 6th, we will be able to pivot to in-person instruction, if the metrics allow us to do so.
Okay, okay, good, because I know a lot of folks were disappointed to hear the news about the two weeks. Dr. Robertson, you said the 66,000 students, so does that mean that a couple thousand have unenrolled, or do you know how many people have chosen to homeschool or private school?
So our last check on our homeschool numbers, this time last year, we were right about 2,000, and now we're right about 3,000. So we're about 1,000 students up on.
For homeschool have a problem? Have a problem that opted to not?
You know what? I don't have any comparison on the private schools. I think our, Melissa Ingram, while she's not here, but I think our projected enrollment was going to be just under 67,000, and I think we're about 66 right now. So maybe that additional 1,000 is the reason why.
Okay. Okay, and then the Safe Learning Centers. So is it the monitors? Because I got a text, and I got it on the way down here, so that's why I'm bringing this up at the last minute. At one school, they seem to think that some schools have custodians and bus drivers, some schools have teacher assistants and specialists being monitors. Does it just depend on the site base? Because there was a question about the equity of the monitors.
Yeah, so no custodians are serving as monitors, because they have duties right now. But our bus drivers and bus assistants don't have any particular duties right now, nor do some of our general assistants and PE assistants. So we had a list of assistants that aren't being used in the virtual setting. We want to take advantage of those individuals and their skill set to be able to work with kids. So, work with Mr. Freeman from the transportation side, and Mr. Pace as an example, because we have a large number of those staff. We contacted them, put the staff through training last week, and they were out and about. And small sample size, the four schools I went to today, I was blown away, because I guess my expectation, I don't know, all the kids were engaged in learning, and the monitors were walking around, and it was like, wow, they didn't even know I was coming. I don't know. Maybe the other ones weren't exactly like that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends on where you go, and yeah, at what time of the day, maybe. And then the, I had a question for Mr. Ames. Is he, or is he still here, or maybe? Yeah, okay. On the video, he said that only a certain cleaning supplies were allowed in the school. I'm assuming that's for the overall cleaning. There's really no limitations to. for the overall cleaning. Uh, there's really no limitations to personal, like when students take their own hand sanitizer or their own even disinfectant wipes, because I know some of them are very different.
Yeah, we hope that students don't bring any disinfect wipes in because we don't have safety data sheets that know what is wrong if something happens.
Okay.
Uh, personal uh hand sanitizer, I think Dr. Spencer's already agreed to personal, as long as it meets the guidelines of sixty percent alcohol.
Six, okay, sixty, okay, good. Because, uh, yeah, I mean, we get all educated, like I just thought all soaps, you know, fought, fought bacteria, and I've just all of a sudden learned to switch out a lot of my soaps in my house. It's all a learning, learning curve. Okay, so sixty percent alcohol for personal um um hands.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is that it for now, Mrs. Weems?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Holtz, and then Mrs. uh, Ms. Owens.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, um, I had the pleasure of sitting with my grandson his first day at middle school at uh Independence Middle. And I do say pleasure because I, I approached it somewhat with some apprehension and a little bit of anxiety, but it was just, just so refreshing, and I can't say enough how much I was so pleased and how much I ca- I want to compliment those three teachers that I met at Independence Middle. They, what I was amazed at how interactive, they made the lesson plans, and they allowed the kids to speak and also to type in um, you know, responses. They, they made it almost feel like the real thing. I was so, so pleased with that, and I have since heard from five other parents who have told me the same thing. So I want to, I, I feel it's happening all over the city, and I want to compliment you and Mr. Rogers, uh Robertson especially, but everybody who was involved in this, and I'm hoping we're gonna have a really, really successful year. And I think the teachers have really, you know, gone way out of their um realm to do this, and their enthusiasm has been very contagious, because even when I got up to make a break, I was kind of sidelining, looking at my grandson, and he was laughing and smiling and, you know, um, you know, just nodding his head at everything, so it, kudos to everybody. I just feel so excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holtz, and Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions about the uh scheduling and the dual uh teaching for simultaneous and, and virtual at the same time. Um, I guess, kind of just starting off, is there a grade cutoff or minimum uh level for teachers who are gonna teach in person and online at the same time? And I kind of ask that um having watched first grade this week. Um, and I, I second Ms. Holtz. I'm amazed by what the teacher is able to do. However, the thought of seeing that happen while they're doing a in-person class and then trying to engage students online at the same time might work for a high school classroom and still might be difficult, but is there a, a minimum um grade level that we're gonna do that with?
So, so there's not, Ms. Owens, but, but uh you, you're exactly right. So we are getting very few takers, from what I'm hearing, in K to three. We're getting a handful in four, five. The predominant teachers that are agreeing to take on this are secondary, and, and for the reasons that you mentioned.
So um with that said, the elementary students who are currently scheduled in the mixed classrooms, uh as we move to face-to-face, the option two children will then be pulled out of those teachers' classrooms, and then they'll go to the virtual learning center?
Yeah, so there's gonna be two things. One, they'll go into a, a space within their own option two classroom at their homeschool or with a partner school, which has been very popular at the elementary. And then, even in doing so, we're going to need uh the central virtual learning center, which is why I requested with Mr. Honsacker to use all of the additional seven FTEs to serve elementary school. Plus, we have some additional staff with elementary school that we normally don't give out until September thirtieth, because we want to make sure all the numbers balance out. So we'll have enough based upon our projections to, to staff the elementary VLC, which we think is gonna be four, four to five hundred kids.
Okay, so that, I'm trying to kind of get an understanding, the elementary VLC will include teachers from each elementary school, teaching kids in their own homeschool, and some that are teaching kids that are grouped maybe two elementary schools together?
Uh, no. The, the teachers in the virtual learning center will be teachers in the virtual learning center.
No, but yeah, n- yes, Ms. Owens, you're, you're correct.
But from their homes.
Some of the students who are served in the virtual learning environment for the remainder of the semester will have a teacher from their homeschool. There will not be enough teachers in each homeschool to accommodate all of the students who've requested that in every school. And so some of the schools have partnered up, and they've said, well, I got six kids, and you got six kids, that's twelve together, and one of us has an extra teacher who wants to teach virtually, let's put those together, not an extra, but a teacher who wants to teach, let's put those together, and that'll be a class, a virtual class. At some point, we're gonna run out of teachers to be able to do that, which is where this additional staffing complexity comes in. And those are, we're gonna have to have those teachers in a virtual learning center that's central, and then all of those kids that we can't make that fit happen for are gonna be in that central virtual learning center, and they'll be placed with a teacher there, won't be from their homeschool, could be from any school in the city.
Okay, and for students who chose option two for the first semester, it's possible or likely that they will have one teacher that they start the year out with. They'll transition to the VLC teacher for the second part of whenever we uh go face-to-face, and then if they move into face-to-face later, then they'll have a third teacher within the one school, within the one elementary year. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. That could happen, but not necessarily.
Yeah, so the first step for us is to try to minimize the number of changes anyway. So the principals have already scheduled as many of the students who selected option two into a classroom with a teacher who's gonna be teaching an option two. They've done as much of that as they can.
Right.
There will be some class changes that have to happen based on that, and they'll go with a homeschool teacher who's virtual to the greatest extent possible. Those students that I just talked about will not have to change in either of those two scenarios if we go back to face-to-face. Those students will go back to the teacher they're with. The students who are in the virtual learning center, because they could be with any teacher in the city, if, when we go back to face-to-face, those students may end up with a different teacher.
Okay, do we have any uh predictions, I guess, on how many students that may affect? And kind of the areas, you showed us the um different schools, and we know that some of our schools have a much higher rate of the virtual learning students, and so I'm wondering if it is gonna be a higher percentage of our Title I students uh ending up with these three teachers within the elementary range um within the school year.
It could actually work the opposite, because you've got a higher number of students in some schools who've asked for virtual learning, that some of the teachers who are available in the homeschool, we can put more of those kids in those classes, so it could actually end up being the opposite.
Okay, um, I guess that's it for right now.
Okay, for now. All right, Mrs. Manning, and then Mrs. Riggs.
Um, yeah, another question about IB, Dr. Rogers, if you don't mind. You know, I, we've, as Ms. Anderson and Ms. Weems have said, we are still getting concerns, and I appreciate you acknowledging that there are, you know, you understand that there are concerns. Um, you mentioned that you have put some great things in place. Can you, can you kind of just help me understand kind of since our last meeting, what the conversations have been?
Sure. So my conversation with Mrs. Cox was such that they, they are planning specifically at Princess Anne High School is to uh partner students with mentors in during first and second term to assist with their, their um independent assessment. That's a huge concern for our seniors to make sure that they have all of the resources available to them, because those are due um before spring break, and they have to be graded in-house, and they also have to be sent to IB. Uh, so that's one way in which the support is being uh held there.
Okay.
Uh, holding bootcamps to assist uh students, and we've certainly offered opportunities for teachers to um have some stipend uh to support those students during off-hours. Of course, that's uh limited to the availability of the teacher because teachers have things to do as well, and certainly we will, we will use the Mondays. Uh, some teachers have offered to support students specifically with their uh independent assessments on, on Saturdays, meeting students at the beach, at, at coffee shops, uh things a- along that line. Uh, they've done some things to uh partner um courses so that they um have opportunities all year long uh to facilitate uh the support that they need. Uh, again, we've worked with IB uh to identify ways in which that some of the assignments can be reduced. Uh, and they're still having conversations and working with um division-level staff to identify ways in which to support students uh not only during the school, school day, but during outside of the uh school day as well.
Okay, thank you so much, and has that all been communicated to the parents and the students already regarding the mentors and things like that?
So I don't know whether it's been communicated directly to parents. Now, I can check with um Mrs. Cox. I just spoke with her today, actually, so I know they had a good meeting on Friday.
Okay, because I think the way, you know, you kind of put me at ease in knowing that, you know, you're familiar with the IB program. I just think that maybe even having you communicate with them, I, I think you did a great job explaining,
Sure.
you know, our efforts. Yeah, okay, thank you so much. Um, my next question is about um Zoom meetings. I don't know if this is a Mr. Din question or who this would be for. Um, I was contacted by a parent today that had an episode um they weren't very pleased about at one of our schools. I, I know that in some Zoom meetings, like the host has to let um the person in rather than just clicking a link. Um, and I don't know that that's happening, or are we, i- is that something that we're using? Where the host has to let the people in and?
Yeah, so when you set the Zoom meeting up there, you have a choice to allow, enable people to join before, or just, or wait for the ho- host to let you in. And so learning uh opportunity, I think we had some teachers who didn't check that box, and uh there were some, some uh people who entered the Zoom meeting that were not students in the class and uh did some things that, that we are going to be holding them accountable for through the division's code of conduct and acceptable use policy, and um if necessary, in, involving law enforcement.
Okay, great, thank you. I just, yeah, I'm just emphasizing that the host needs to let the people in.
Yeah, and the, so the principals will be sharing, uh, my team will be sharing with principals tomorrow to remind staff of that point.
Okay.
And also to report any, any thing that you see that's not appropriate.
Okay, yeah, I know in this instance, they did contact the principal, so.
Yeah, that was the, that was the add-on. I was gonna say was to continue to encourage folks in those scenarios to let, make sure they let their principals know if there's a concern. Um, you know, the Monday professional development that's coming, that'll be an emphasis during that day. But if they will let them know if a concern comes up, we will be tracking that, because in some cases, we're recording it, but we'll be tracking that through the Office of Safe Schools to make sure we keep our kids safe.
Okay, and then just one other quick question, Dr. Robertson. How many teachers do we now have that are in the VLC just doing virtual learning? I know things, dynamics have changed, and I'm trying to follow what's going on.
So we have, so I don't have the number of teachers that are home-based in option two?
That are just doing virtual?
Yeah, so, but we have thirty thousand students that are in that setting. So I, I can get that number, but I don't have that number right now.
So, but are we still doing, but the majority of those, they're still with their homeschool, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the majority of them, not all of them, but the majority of them?
So the way that we created the schedule was to maximize the ability for students and teachers to say connected to their homeschool. And so every teacher um has some students from their homeschool. Dr. Spence shared an example where we had a couple of schools who combined numbers to create a class. So the, the teacher who taught that class has students from their school, their class in their class, but they also have some students from a neighboring school in their class.
Okay.
So does that answer your question?
So that's the difference where it changed from what it was initially gonna be, where we're gonna have just a whole virtual learning center.
Yeah.
Now we have some teachers doing both. Uh, when, when we go back for in-person, there will be some teachers offering, offered a stipend, they're gonna be teaching in-person and virtual.
Yes.
And that's gonna be how we're gonna handle those students. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Riggs, and then Mrs. Felton.
Um, this first question is for you, Dr. Robins, Robertson. Um, I know you said you didn't know how many teachers were teaching virtual. You didn't have the amount. But my question is, I know that a lot are, several of them have contacted us or me and said, you know, they had not heard yet, and this was of last Friday. Um, and I wanted to know, were most of them granted the virtual if they asked for that?
So we had uh, uh, out of eight hundred and forty-one teachers on August the twentieth that had s- had indicated a preference for option two, I think it was roughly four hundred and nineteen had submitted documentation that was reviewed by the employ- office employee relations and sent back to schools, placing them then onto medical tiers. And that information was used to um schedule teachers into the option one or option two virtual. It did not work out in all cases. I'm aware of at least two cases right now where I've got names on a list in my office that when we pivot to the central VLC, I'm, I'm gonna try to get those two people to consider going to the central VLC, because that'll give them what they're looking for in option two, because their school is so heavenly, heav- heavily laden with option one, that they didn't have any teachers they could give up to go to option two, because over eighty percent of the kids wanted option one, which ate up all their teachers. So we are going to try to work with those remaining few who have that documented medical condition to serve them in the central VLC, which will, will be conversations we have not this week, but next week.
Thank you. All right, and I have a, just a couple of other things to say. Um, as far as the um the IB program, just, just within the last couple of minutes, we've all received an email from a parent, and I just want to say this. Um, that, and, and you, you can listen, it's not a question, but she wanted to let us know that not all parents and students are unhappy with the four by four. They're very happy with it. They have a senior, and uh I just wanted to mention that, because I think it, it merits that for people to hear that. And um they're very pleased with it, including their daughter. So, and she, they're not the only one. She said there's, there's many that they've talked to that are happy and okay with the four by four. So I did want to s- and, and let you guys know that. And the other thing is I, I got a call or a text from a, a a fellow colleague that used to teach, I used to teach with at Luxford, and she's thrilled with the way today went. Yesterday was a little dicey with, you know, attendance, but she is just so much in her element, and she said she'd be glad for anybody to come and and watch her virtually teach, that it has gone so well, and she's excited. So I just, I just wanted to give a couple of positive things too.
Thank you, Mrs. Riggs, Mrs. Felton, and then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, this question is for the USDA uh food plan, and uh I'd just like to say it's great that uh has been extended, but you mentioned that it's gonna have the same model as it did for the summer class as well. But were, did we, or sh- will there be any kind of modification due to the unique operation that we're into now, as far as it comes to the dis- dis- distribution of food and where they'd be able to come to get the food? Any modification, modification be made, if any?
So, Dr. Smith will be able to talk about all the details associated with uh how we're doing that. I'm sorry, I could only hear a little bit.
I'm asking, uh, it's great news to know that a plan was extended, and what was relayed to us four minutes ago, that you're gonna say, have the same model, summer model that we had for getting food out. I'm mostly concerned about the communication with the parents or the com- or the community, and/or did we have to do any modification? Being that we are in a unique division operation, so was any modification that had to be made?
Um, a little bit. We were at thirty-seven sites when we started this in the summer. Uh, that was the, the threshold that USDA authorized for us for that. Um, they've let us, they've kind of opened the gates for any level, so we were able to expand that to all of our sites. Um, we didn't really have to do much training, because all our staffs were rotating in, you know, the sites that were not feeding, were rotating in and working at those sites, so uh it was. uh, it was really pretty seamless as far as our end. The problem we had was we have one day to get the message out. And and so that wa- that was where some of the uh the communications I'm sure had had come in. It was in the communication that went out. Um, but it was down, down a ways. And so some probably didn't read all the way down. We had the website up and updated. Uh, but I think the message is getting out. We've been watching the social media. Uh, we served about sixty-one hundred meals the first day, which is about what we were averaging in the summer. Uh, we went up to ninety-six hundred today. So I think they're, I think they're adjusting and figuring it out, yes.
I just wanna say thank you for the um persistence and the that you all took on this because it is very important to to some, if not most, families in this area. So thank you for all that you've done and I appreciate your good work. Thank you.
Yeah, I I just wanna add in there that we have tried to emphasize to our managers to be flexible. And we have people in the building as early as six-thirty in the morning, so if parents are calling and and need to get in there early, uh, we're trying to be flexible with those alternate arrangements and we're tracking that information. Uh, we're getting it weekly to see how many alternate times we're getting so we can make some good decisions on those serving times, pick-up times, you know, at the end of the week.
Okay, Mister Edwards.
I guess this is a Doctor Robertson question. The uh transition out of student learnings uh centers as, you know, on October sixth, um, those students that are accommodated there now are not gonna have that option, at least in the school-based learning center. Is that correct?
So I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question, Mister Edwards.
The, the learning centers that were set up to accommodate the students that needed a place to.
So we don't have anything set up right now? We have the ver- we have the central V L C, what we're calling.
Talking, Donnie, sorry, he's talking about the safe learning centers.
Safe learning center. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, wrong term.
That's okay.
Yes.
Yeah, the answer, Mister Edwards, is that's correct. We don't have a plan and and any intention to continue with the safe learning centers past a pivot to face-to-face instruction.
My concern is the transition of those students that are staying virtual um on October sixth. Um, I know there are some options that are not school-based. Um, which I believe we're, which I believe we're supporting through Mister Freeman and 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 others, but uh so anyway, I'm concerned that those students, you know, that, and again, the good news is we've got a month to work it out. But we need to make sure that we got a plan for for those students that, you know, uh ha- have to go someplace that are, you know, we're, I'm delighted that we're accommodating, but but but, you know, I'm I'm worried about bridging them out.
Well, I know at at this point, uh Parks and Recs has uh plenty of room because they normally would operate twenty-two sites and they're operating seventeen right now because they didn't have the numbers to operate twenty-two. So I think they're gonna appreciate the opportunity to expand to five more sites after October sixth with potential of getting some more um ch- children who needed that service. And of course, as you mentioned, Mister Freeman has identified through the work of that committee, a number of sites that that parents can go to to seek uh childcare options.
Maybe Mr. Freeman knows and are there, are they at capacity or is there room out in those privately operated uh that that we are supporting because they're charitable-based?
Uh, so I I think what you're describing is we have uh worked with the city and other partners to ensure that those uh sites that offer childcare, those childcare locations, that we get the best visibility that we can. And that's all posted on our website uh for the, for people to be able to go in and identify, hey, this one has availability, this one does not. That's the intention behind it there. Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, we need, excuse me, to do a time check. We do have three in the queue who've already spoken and I and I feel we can wait till the uh formal meeting, if if that's agreeable.
Like to, I, 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 it's, it has to do with the October fifth, October sixth. I don't understand why October sixth and why not Monday, October fifth. That's all.
The, the only reason for Monday, not Monday, October fifth is because we remember when we pivot to face-in-face instruction, those students will still not be coming to school on those Mondays because that will still be professional learning for staff.
Thank you.
So i- if I may to to have, uh, to weigh, weigh on this for when we start the formal meeting. Uh, I neglected to mention at the beginning during admin matters with regard to scheduling speakers tonight. We have thirty-eight in person and doing the math, that's about two and a half hours. I think the consensus generally is with the present process that we would like to at least get the in the feeling I got just informally checking with a few is to most definitely get the in-person speakers uh finished, which would mean going beyond seven-thirty and we can suspend that rule for that. The, what I, what I'll be asking for a decision on is the twenty additional Zoom speakers. I've, I've been told and all these speakers are, speakers are speaking to the same action item. We certainly would not take any action without hearing all these speakers. So we can proceed with those at that time as well, or we can pivot to the, the rest of our formal meeting and defer that action item to uh item eighteen, vote on remaining action items, discuss it, hear those speakers at that point and discuss at that point. So uh we can wait and make this decision at the start of the formal meeting or or make the decision now. So again, I do propose at at a, at a minimum that we get through the, the in-person speakers. I think there's consensus for that, right?
Well, uh, Ms. Rye, point of order, if I could. Yeah, I I believe the appropriate thing would be in um the formal meeting to have a vote to suspend the bylaws.
Yes, I I I acknowledge that, just so that we can, you can be thinking in the short break period.
Okay, thank you.
If I didn't make that clear. Um, but the other point would be what to do with this so that we can make the announcement upfront about the Zoom speakers, so as a courtesy to them, so they can plan their evening if they're gonna be waiting longer than not. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we will uh, so the workshop, we will consider adjourned and re- and meet at six o'clock for the formal meeting.